Okay, item one, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? I'd like to add five F of recognition. And item two, approval of the school board minutes, may I have a motion? David?
I move that we approve the school board minutes as set forth in our pack and inscribed in paragraph two A through D.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, item three, comments by student representatives, I think we have one who is going to be with us shortly.
Yeah, Abby's going to be late.
Nolan?
So I guess I'll start off. Right now, spring sports are wrapping up and AP tests are as well, so coming to the end of a very stressful period of time for a lot of the upperclassmen. Also prom is this weekend at the Portland Club, it's Casino Royale theme. And today, in the gym actually, we had voting on the proposed budget. And for seniors, we've been working on our STP research and the whole process with that. And what the STP is for the members of the public who don't know is it stands for Senior Transition Project, and it's a project where seniors will go into the community and/or into the workforce and basically they'll shadow somebody at a job or a field that they're interested in in order to gain a little insight as to what that career might be like. And then at the end, there's a presentation. A lot of seniors also just finished up with their senior to senior. Senior to senior, I guess, project, that's something where seniors will help out elderly members of the community with things like yard work and anything they might need. It's really, really a great program and it was a lot of fun. Also, seniors have three days left of school, so that's definitely exciting, three days left of classes. And so right now, the main focus for us is just graduation plans, and that's kind of what the Student Council, at least the seniors are focusing on right now. The sophomores are working hard, raising money already for their prom. They've already got it pretty well planned out. They're definitely a very, very organized group. Also, the art show, students' art from throughout the entire year is right now being shown in the gym lobby. So if you haven't seen that, you should get down there and check it out. It's definitely, there's some really impressive art there. Photography, ceramics, and painting and drawing, things like that. Definitely some great stuff down there, too.
Thank you. Any questions for Nolan?
Can I just add that I did view all the, there's photographs, there's paintings, there's ceramics. It is really impressive.
Item four is comments from the public on agenda items. We have a lot of people in the room tonight, which is unusual for us. If anyone has comments on items that are on our agenda tonight, this is the opportunity to stand up and speak. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item five A, communications. And we have a legislative sentiment, and I believe Senator Rebecca Millet is here. And the speech team is here.
Good evening, everyone.
Great to see you, as always.
It's always great to be here. It's, yes, a refreshing change from my usual environment. And I know you are all going to laugh, as those of you who know me well, that I'm going to read something from, yes, my smartphone.
When did you get a cellphone?
Even shorter than normal.
So, we were so looking forward to having the speech team come up and join us in Augusta, but I recognize that it's very hard to organize and coordinate schedules for such an active and large group of wonderful students. So, I'm going to take this opportunity that's okay with the board to actually read what I was going to say on the Senate floor, and then imagine, if you will, all these people who speechify on a regular basis, standing up and applauding you, and you rising and accepting their greetings. So, I stand today to recognize the Cape Elizabeth High School Speech Team. As we all know, as members of the Maine State Senate, public speaking is an important skill in life. A well-given speech can be powerful. It can move masses to action. It can change someone's mind. It may even be remembered and quoted throughout history. For some, this ability is natural; for others, it takes years of hard work and practice. Whatever the case is for the students of the Cape Elizabeth High School Speech Team, we could all take tips from them. This year, the team won its fourth consecutive high school state speech championship. This is particularly noteworthy because in 2008, due to school budget constraints, Cape Elizabeth High School was set to lose both its speech and debate teams. Luckily, the speech team was reinstated, and these impressive future leaders now take full advantage of the opportunity to compete. These students have put in hours of hard work, practicing the skills of speaking, and in many cases, overcoming stage fright. Their dedication and work ethic clearly shows in their continued success. I commend these accomplished students on their performance and wish the team and its returning members the best of luck next year. So, the sentiment reads, "Be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and House of Representatives, join in recognizing the Cape Elizabeth High School Speech Team on its winning the 2013 Maine Forensic Association State Championship. This is the fourth year in a row that the speech team has won this title. We extend our congratulations and best wishes to the members of the team on this achievement. And be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forthwith on behalf of the 126 legislature and the people of the state of Maine. It's signed by the President of the Senate and Speaker of the House, sponsored by myself and co-sponsored by Representative Hammond and Representative Monahan-Derrick." So congratulations to all.
We're sorry not to go up to Augusta. The students, I had a trick planned for the students that I had suggested that we go to a place to eat called the Red Barn, and I was going to actually take, and they were very much in objection to this, they wanted sushi rather than the Red Barn and deep fried food. So I was going to take them across the river, the Kennebec, and actually take them up to this place and punish them with this food. But we didn't get that chance, and we also missed the chance to sit in the galley and hear your speakers up there. So thank you so much. Just very, very quickly, let's see, we have a photo up here, and this photo tells a great deal. Of course, my friend and co-coach and also debate coach is Lisa Malanson. And if you actually look at this photo, you will see another first in the state of Maine, which is two people in the front. We have Nolan Chase and E.B., neither one is here tonight, but they are holding trophies. This is the first time in the history of Maine forensics that a school won both speech and debate. So, kids, congratulations.
Yes, would you like some?
Well, I just want to send my congratulations as well, because without a dedicated student body, a student team, this could not be possible. And many other classmates, I'm sure, ask you, why do you wake up at 5:00 a.m. on a Saturday morning in the dead of winter to get on a bus to Skowhegan or to Brunswick or wherever else we go?
Yes.
And the answer is, a few months down the line, you have built up tremendous friendships, you have expanded your speaking skills, your repertoire of literature, and I think you know that it shows through in subtle ways in how you perform in the classroom and how you interact in your world. So I am so proud of all of you, and thank you. And I also want to thank Mr. Mullen here, because I think you know how hard he works with each one of you. And the thing about a speech team is, there are 13 categories. 13 specialties that you can have, whether it's poetry reading, prose reading, duo interpretation, ensemble, extemporaneous speaking on current events. There are numerous categories, and that takes work with each individual's material. So it's not a group practice. It is very individualized, and Mr. Mullen has set up the team in a way that we bring in volunteers from the community. We have David Campbell, a former parent, a parent of a former student, who works with us on a daily, weekly basis. We have Cindy Stephanus, parent of a graduate as well. She has worked with us for years now, and the four of us really have worked with all of you, so.
So in the interest of this being about students and their abilities and their speaking, we're going, it's kind of like a Field of Dreams trope here, that we have four seniors here, I believe, who were a part of the team four years ago, and I'm going to just ask them to step forward like the Field of Dreams coming through the corn, and then we will have all the other students stand up, but let's let the seniors just step forward. And let's see, in, what is it, 15 seconds they have, just, you can do it right out here, okay? Right out here, and just talk to the people face-to-face, no cellphone, sorry, okay, no laptop, but who they are and just what they have done over the years, their events. And there are 13 of them. So go ahead, Griffin.
All right, I'm Griffin Carpenter, and over the course of my four years in speech, I have done poetry, prose, dramatic interpretation, and ensemble categories.
My name is Enid Dulcet, and over the last, over the three years that I took part in speech, I did extemporaneous speech, duo, ensemble, prose, and literature.
And I'm Jonathan Monahan. Over the three years that I did speech, I did duo, ensemble, and poetry categories.
I'm Sam Barksdale. Over the last two, three years of speech, I've done humorous interpretation, storytelling, and duo interpretation categories.
And these were some of our leaders this year. The funniest man among high school students is on the end here, Sam Barksdale, who is writing, part of writing our satire, which is going to be in a couple of weeks. But these are highly accomplished students. Now let's have all the other students stand up, please. And a round of applause. And thanks so much, and thanks for, five years ago, finding the wherewithal to pull us back from the grave so that we could live again. We're very happy with the support that you give us. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Senator Millet.
And we're going to leave, because we have some things to say.
Thank you. Well, congratulations to you all on your championships, and I know you've put an enormous amount of work into making that happen, so, well done.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on, then, we have item five E, presentation of the district's technology plan. One moment while I set up my technology.
Put this way, you better be able to set it up.
No pressure.
Nope. Nothing works. So, I've put together a little bit of information for you that extends beyond the documents that are online that we've developed as a committee, so if you look behind you, you may see some things. Thank you for giving me the time to present our technology plan that we've created as a committee. I'll introduce some of the members, and some of them are actually here in the room. And it was a very large committee, so many of them are not, and we'll go through that list and everything. To start with, I just want to introduce some of the resources that we used. There are a ton of resources out there for implementing a technology plan, for getting your materials together and providing some guidance in the plan and everything. We came across a resource as part of DigitalLearningDay.org. You see a graphic up here, let's see if I can size that a little bit better. And this is a graphic that kind of encompasses a lot of the parts of our planning as we went through it. Unfortunately, the plan that we're, by necessity, creating is not following as a, encompassing a view as what you see in the graphic there. You see how this graphic has a bit of a flow to it with the arrows hitting on different points of implementation and whatnot. And notice in the center, there's the student learning. We kind of use this and the encompassing ideas as our guidance, but unfortunately, we had to fit it into the structure of the plan, which is about 10 years old, and isn't quite as forward-thinking and as present as something like this. So the tech plan itself is available on the website. I believe it'll be linked up shortly. If you're interested in the address, it's Onsites.google.com/A/CapeElizabethSchools.org/tech-plan-2013-2016. And those of you who are watching the video, you can rewind and replay that again, or you can look very closely at it, or watch the website, it'll come up shortly. As you can see, the tech plan has 14 points to it, listed on the side over here. Those points are community and parental involvement, a vision, the goals, to identify the necessary technology, collaboration with adult literacy services providers, strategies for improving academic achievement and teaching effectiveness, integration for technology with curricula, instruction, and assessment, technology types and cost coordination with funding resources, supporting resources, steps to increase accessibility, promotion of various curricula and teaching strategies that integrate technology, professional development, innovative delivery strategies, and accountability measures. Again, the website is being completed, the full document is linked at the bottom here, and so if you'd like, you can access that and take a look at the full document, all 14 points in there. Just to introduce it again, a little bit what the technology plan is about, then, the technology plan, again, is required by the state of Maine, and required also for us to receive E-rate services. That provides a bit of an income for us, as we may have seen in our budget. It amounts to around $15,000, excuse me, that comes back to us from our service providers, and primarily for us, that's our cellphone, our LAN phone, and the third one is our, do I remember the top of the third one? Also, communication aspects. It used to be our internet service providing, but because we no longer pay for internet services, those are paid through MSLN, and they take care of those costs, and so they actually capture those E-rate funds directly. So, we don't, we get a lot of money back from these, it's a very important thing that we do. Unfortunately, again, the plan and the structure of it is designed back in 2002, and so it's kind of an old structure that we're working in. That said, I'd like to introduce some of the people that helped get us through this process. It was quite a long process. We started back in November, I believe it was, was our first meeting, and with a large committee, as you see in the list of names there, there's several principals. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, other principals who are involved. Thank you to our teachers. Thank you to Kate on the school board here, who was instrumental and well as seeing the process along. These people were, their input was really invaluable. And in particular, I don't, oh, I believe he's on the next page, excuse me, Jay Shirma as well, was instrumental in providing the voice of the Thomas Memorial Library, given that some of our services interweave with Thomas Memorial Library, and it's important that his voice, and actually, you'll see the name and specifics detailed about Thomas Memorial Library as well through the plans. Generally speaking, then, if we just go through a couple of these, and I won't belabor too many of the details, because it gets into lots of tables and details like that which get a little dry and boring, I don't have any fun student presentations to include, I'm sorry. Nothing as exciting as that. But the vision that we have encompasses the same vision that the school district has. We restated the same four core components there, the community, academics, passion, and ethics. It was very easy to encompass technology in those vision points. As we found, as we went through the process and, again, accessed our current resources, we're finding that the technology is no longer a skin to our actions and our purposes and our daily activities in the education world. It's really become more and more a part of our skeleton of what we do and how we do things. When you look at things like individualized learning and assessment and some of those kind of things, you really can't do it anymore without technology. You just don't, teachers can't access the depth of understanding of what their students are up to, the students can't access the information. Education is very difficult to take place in our current culture without technology, so it's becoming just instrumental throughout our practices. And it was, again, given our structure, it was a little difficult to communicate that, but that's part of what we were finding there, and I think it's highlighted really well in our vision, and how easily the vision translates into the importance of technology and how it connects to all points. Mention, a couple other aspects that may be useful for us in our discussion is some of the changes that we've seen in our budget and the staffing changes that we've seen, part of those came out of our development of this plan. In particular, our changing from our professional development model and the technology integrators that we have developed over the years. It was interesting to look at the prior version of this document, it was from 2009, 2010, and the talk at that point in that document was about how we finally got three technology integrators, one per school. And now, in this year, then, we're looking, we're writing into our budget and hoping to implement the conversion of those three technology integrator positions into an even more incorporated professional-level position at the literacy, or the library and instructional technology service specialist at the middle school and the high school, and the technology teacher formalized as a full teaching position as opposed to an ed tech position as it has been in the past. So those are reflective of some of the vision and the plan that we're putting in place with this technology plan. I don't have much else to highlight to say. Again, reading through the details, you can look at some of the pieces in there. If you'd like a little bit of time to read through them yourselves, if you have your own device, you can go to the website, if you haven't had a chance to look at it already. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer any that you have. Questions for Mr. Kramer?
I actually do have questions, but they're about the MILTE program.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if the district has made a decision, one way or the other, whether iPads or HPs?
Yes, we've decided to go with the iPads as our future direction for implementing one-to-one technology. We've been seeing the development of them in the high school. We see success there and developing, continued development success there. We see that as the future direction of computing as well, in general. A laptop, you may notice, I'm presenting with a laptop currently, I had a lot that I was working on up until this presentation, and so in some cases, that is a necessary device. But at this point, I could just as easily be presenting with my iPad and showing all these documents and everything, and I did half of the editing of this on my iPad in our meetings, and Kate can attest to this, there were sometimes people who came and didn't bring a device with them, and I had an extra one, and I handed it to them and said, "Here we go," because I'm not printing out papers for everybody. You may have noticed, I didn't hand you a stack of 44-page document, as this one is, to print out and hand to you and say, "Please look at this. If you need to print it, then yes, go ahead." But digital, the way the technology is going is into mobile devices, it's into thin client-like devices that have still access to all the resources of the web. There's still great creative tools and the like, and we foresee it as an exciting movement for the future.
Great.
We're also very excited that it is an open option that is not just available for districts who've worked really hard, as we have in the high school, to create a one-to-one environment with iPads. We had to do that all on our own, and we're finally moving out of this island state and now into a place where we'll have cohorts, not only within our district, we'll have our middle school and our high school teachers actually being able to talk about the same kind of implementation of technology, but there are also districts in the neighboring areas that, as I understand, will also be moving to iPads as their choice for implementation. And so it's an exciting move forward, and that's probably how we chose it.
I have a question. Do you foresee, right now, teachers have laptops and administrators have laptops. Do you foresee them changing to the iPads, or will they always have laptops?
The implementation model for, the implementation model will be very similar to the high school, where all teachers and staff who are part of the implementation will have a MacBook and an iPad. Under the MLTI proposal that Apple's presented, then, it's actually a MacBook Air, so it's a much thinner, lighter MacBook than we're used to, it's more powerful. It's also an iPad Mini, so it's more portable for the teacher, and they don't have to juggle too many big devices. And for the student, it's a full iPad, so they have larger screen, which is not only helpful for them, given it's going to be their sole device, it's also important because it's a sized, right-sized device for the smarter balance assessment and other assessments that will be coming online, and that's how the students will be accessing their assessments through the iPad.
I have a follow-up question. I have one as well. Again, on the MILTE program, sorry. I'm wondering if the district has made a decision on what to do with the existing seven A laptops?
The existing MLTI laptops?
Yes.
We return them to the state, because they aren't owned by us. The lease ends at the end of June, and we return them to the state in that timeframe so that they can take care of them. In the past, in some districts, we will be buying back a small portion, there is an option to buy back. Part at the end of the lease is to buy out that very last portion of the lease, it comes to $47 a laptop. And we are planning on buying back a select few for distinct implementations within the district. There's a few departments that need a few laptops, but we aren't planning on buying back on a large scale. It's not enjoyable to support old technology.
And, yeah, can you just articulate, I mean, you get them back for $47, I guess I'm unarticulated, apparently, because I've already begun, but you get them back for $47, but they're wiped clean, so you have to reinstall software, and then, unlike under the MILTE program, when the support is provided, if a piece of equipment fails, now you have a four-year-old laptop that's no longer supported, that could consume enormous amounts of district staff time, and frankly, is not the most valuable resource that we have. I mean, we are able to use them, and they do support, you know, a fair amount of basic work, and you certainly can add to this, but they aren't the most valuable resource we have, and the cost-benefit analysis is that it's too costly, and the benefits are not that high.
Good to know. I know a lot of people out there... Good to know. I know a lot of people out there are curious about what's going to be happening with that asset moving forward.
Yeah, it's not our asset to begin with, so we only get an option to buy them back if we'd like to. And again, there is that price point and the consideration that they're old devices and they no longer have any service. So what we end up doing is, even though the buyback price point is only forty-seven dollars, we've basically priced out the additional components that will be necessary to make them really feasible usable devices. So for example, in the, in community services, they need a replacement for their after-school program. They've got some laptops there that are older than four years old, I believe. They're not new laptops at all. So they're going to be replacing them with bought-back MLTI devices. But those are, those we will upgrade as well with their memory and their hard drive, as well as buy extra devices for servicing them, if parts. And so the price point ends up at about two hundred and twenty-five dollars per bought-back laptop with those ingredients added in to make it a really full-service kind of device that will continue to be useful in the future.
Makes sense.
Mary?
Do you have an opportunity to ask a question?
I thought I've been fairly quiet.
Okay. I do have a follow-up question about the tablets and the usage of them. I know from students, when the switch was made, there was some concern over whether they would be able to compose as efficiently on them and use them as efficiently as a laptop. And it wasn't the preference of the students. And I'm wondering, has that gotten better? I mean, as kids have used them?
I think we have some students who might be able to reflect a little bit on that as well, if you could.
What I've found is that the technology, it's definitely, it has a certain learning curve. At the beginning, it's very easy to play games on them and very hard to do work on them. But I feel like, once, once you sort of get used to it, it can certainly be a feasible learning device. I know I prefer to use a laptop, but that's just me. I mean, opinions certainly vary throughout the student body. But I do find that, at the beginning, when the iPads are first introduced, it's kind of an awkward thing to kind of, to switch to, because you have the smaller keyboard, the, it's a different tactile experience, I guess, just touching a screen than it is pushing a key, which for some people who learned how to type on a normal keyboard, I guess that bothers them. But I know that opinions do vary on this.
Well, I didn't really get into the whole iPad thing. It doesn't have Play-Doh or it doesn't handle Google Docs very well, which I'm sure they'll make improvements on in the future. But those are the two main things that you would need computers for, plus typing papers. And you can't really do that on that either. So I, like Nolan, I played a lot of games online. I increased my score on Dragon Vale by a lot. But yeah, like you said, I think it works for some people. I just prefer the laptop, and I just usually work in the library on the computers.
What I've found as well is that some of what I'm hearing you guys talk about, the ease of use for playing games and for content consumption and the like versus content creation, is that some of that has to do with where we're coming from as students and teachers. And the initial outset of an iPad was, was very much looking like a content consumption device. And if you use something like a Amazon Kindle Fire, that's even more towards the end of content consumption. They designed it into, into an ecosphere where it's an Amazon shopping product. And that's what it's, it's a door into the Amazon shopping world and that sort of stuff versus an iPad, which actually has a much more extendable aspect to it. And some of us just haven't, haven't been introduced to it well enough. Like, for example, you mentioned Google Drive being difficult to work with, or Google, using Google Documents to be difficult to create with. That's something that even in this school year, we've seen a vast improvement over the Google Drive app. I brought mine up on the screen behind. And you can, you can do a lot more with it than you used to be able to. Not only, you used to only create documents, now you can create spreadsheets as well. And you can edit your stuff right in there. As soon as you create one, it comes up and you can be typing into yourselves and the like, if I can get this to work. The other thing we found, when you have your keyboard, is that some people, like you mentioned, was, there's a concern over the keyboard and how useful it is for text input. And the actual keyboard, when you're in landscape mode, is, is a little bit smaller than a full-screen keyboard, but you can still touch, type pretty accurately. And your, your touch typing speed is actually, for most of our kids, they aren't actual touch typists anyway. And so they're typing about as fast as you can finger peck anyway. Also, a lot of, a lot of students find that they like to split the keyboard and thumb type as well, because it's faster for them. That's how they learned, with their phone. So some of those kind of tools and the like are built in, and some, some just don't know that functionality of the iPad. Some, some of those need to be introduced more, I think, in terms of how we're implementing them. And that's, again, like I said, about, our high school's been an island and been very much alone in doing what they've been doing. And they've been doing a good job with the resources they have, but knowing that we'll have a lot more support. The state and Apple is providing a lot more professional development. The same professional development that's been going on with the MLTI laptops over the last twelve years will now be, also be doing with iPads and implementing that way. So I think the teachers will be finding a lot more support, not only explicitly through that kind of professional development, but also implicitly by just having a neighbor that they can talk to, that doesn't just live down the hall, but also lives across the walk and across the drive and across town to the next town and so forth. And so I foresee that we'll see a lot more uplift in the expectation of what can be done on an iPad and expectation of what gets produced in the end, that, that we haven't yet seen a lot of that, enough of that, I think, at this point. And that's why we still see a lot of the expectations from students that, well, you know, it's good for gaming. I can highlight that. But how much can I really create on it? And the expectation that it just hasn't, it's in development and it's not as high as it can be. So, yeah.
I like this idea personally. I think it was difficult for us as high schoolers to adjust to the iPads because we've had laptops and computers for so long. But the kids that I babysit for, they know how to work my iPad so much better than I do. And when I was doing like work on it, I would just get frustrated and give up and go to a computer. But I feel like if you introduce them first instead of laptops, they'll be much more productive on them. Because I didn't know how to do anything on my iPad except for play games and watch Netflix.
Eric, is a keyboard issued, a physical keyboard issued or not? Is a physical keyboard issued to students?
You can respond too, but Eric, you probably read the same article yesterday, but I read a, you know, very brief research article where someone had sort of analyzed student typing on laptops, iPads with keyboards and iPads, and straight iPads, this was third through sixth grade, had the highest words per minute per typing. So I think we are adapting to those. I think if you were to ask Nolan and Abby, because they learned on laptops, as they have.
They're too old.
They've missed the window. I'm still not as fast, but I'm much faster on my iPad than I was a year ago.
Yeah, the split keyboard that you saw is one reason it can be fast, just because that's what the kids are doing anyway. The other reason it can be fast is because it has autocomplete built in, and your laptop usually doesn't have that. So as you type your words, it'll correct your spellings, it'll, it'll complete your words. So you start typing three or four letters, you press the spacebar, and you're on to the next word. So in some cases, your typing speed improves because of the technology. In other cases, then technology provides an even alternative source of input. With the MLTI iPads, they're, they're not iPad twos, they're iPad threes or fours. I can't remember what, they're the new iPad. And they support speech to text. So you can press your, your microphone key on your keyboard and start talking, and your iPad will listen, and it will translate and produce the text. And there's, there's a little bit of work to get to do it really well. But, you know, you work on your inflection, and you remember to say period or full stop and new paragraph when you need to, and open parentheses. But you can end up being very productive without touching the keyboard. And so there's, there's a lot that this technology offers that a laptop can barely get to, just because of the nature of the device.
David?
I'm curious about a couple of things. Having just received literature from a college, they're recommending laptops. They'll provide you with anything, but they're recommending laptops as their preferred and versus iPads. I have an iPad, and I have a laptop, and I even have an old desktop. The concern I've always had, and one of the reasons why we did iPads was cost. You could get ninety percent of what you want at a much cheaper cost than you could with a laptop. But I've always been concerned because we've looked at this repeatedly over every three or four years in my law firm, and we always go to laptops because of the word processing capabilities, the editing capabilities, the ability to craft documents, which is a large, I guess, went to your earlier point about receiving data versus creating data. I'm curious as to, and I have to say that I find the word processing of Apple and the iPad to be inferior to that of Microsoft. And I'm curious, do you have the same view? Do you look in the future and that Apple's going to catch up?
I find that I can step even further into an inferior word processing mode. And for example, this whole forty-page, forty-four-page document I created in Google Docs, and I didn't use any, it was all based on online text editing. We use it as a collaborative tool so that we could work with each other in our committee. We, I actually did the final formatting and everything in it as well. So I find that I very rarely need the power of Microsoft Office, so to speak. And being in a law firm, I think, is a little bit different, the kind of document creation that you're creating. When you talk about text creation, I think there is an element to that in our, in our education world, and we will never escape that. And there's, you know, writing is very important. But that said, to illustrate your knowledge and to your understanding of things, which is a lot of what the creation process is for, for a student, is to illustrate understanding, that no longer has to be done in writing anymore. It, that is one component that can be done. I think more, as we move in to the, now and as we move into the future, than multimedia presentations, much more interesting than what I just produced here, with movies and, and audio clips and created songs that you've composed and recorded on your device. That kind of stuff is, is much more accessible and, and easy to expect now. It's something that, it's at our, we can, we can hit on those multiple intelligences. Whereas before, we were more relegated to what can you produce with a keyboard, or what can you produce with your note cards and your pen and pencil. And what you can produce now with such a mobile device is this, where you can go out to your backyard and record the stream flow directly onto your iPad, and then go and look up the fish that's going to be swimming in that stream, and then create a movie out of it. And you're doing that all with this device sitting on your lawn chair in your backyard. That, that kind of workflow is, it negates any problem that I see with producing long-form text, which is a minor, it's becoming more of a minor, a minor product in the full educational world. For instances where people do need to produce long-form text and they're struggling with what the iPad can do, then we still have the support of our computer labs of, and many of our students we know have computers at home as well. And they may still migrate to that as their tool for producing some of that stuff. But, but I just, it's not the future that we're going to, is to forty-page documents.
Well, I'm just curious, I have one follow-up question. There does seem to be a difference, and maybe it's the nature of what we do in high school, and it's been a long time since I've been in high school, but maybe you do more, but as I said, the colleges seem to prefer laptops versus tablets.
Some of them.
And to me, maybe it is the length of, of, uh-oh.
Jeff would like to.
You're bringing in a lawyer now? You're bringing in a lawyer to argue with me?
No, I just wanted to add a perspective, because I see myself in the middle ground, actually. And I think you actually captured it, David, pretty well when you started, which is, if you can do with an iPad ninety percent of what you can do with a laptop for less than half the cost of what it takes to get a laptop, that strikes me as a pretty good trade-off. If we wanted to capture virtually, you know, get from ninety percent to ninety-eight percent, a far more efficient way to do it than to buy laptops would be to, if we wanted to do it, I'm not suggesting we should, would be to buy a forty-dollar Bluetooth keyboard for everybody, and, and you could get all the word processing capabilities. And then the only thing that you lose is some of the more sophisticated word, like Microsoft Word, you're right, formatting things within Word and some of the really high-end photo, Photoshop kind of work and digital kind of work. But we did buy two classroom sets of physical keyboards, and they're available for teacher use, and they're available for students to sign out, and they're virtually unused. And I think a lot of kids do. They find that the iPad is a tool. And just like any tool, it has pluses and minuses. It's got advantages and disadvantages. For most kids, I would venture to say, writing long papers, they probably don't do it on the iPad. They might start it on the iPad in class and then email it to themselves and then continue to work at home on a laptop or something like that. But to me, it seems like a really, really, really worthwhile trade-off. And it is extremely cost-effective. And the other, to me, thinking through the logistics of the iPad versus the laptop, one huge advantage of the iPad, right now at least, although laptops are catching up, is the battery life of the iPad. So we give kids the power cords, the charger, charging cords at the beginning of the year, and we say, you don't need to bring those into school ever. Whereas, still with laptops, even with batteries getting better, students would almost all, every day, have to kind of recharge their laptops in the middle of the day at some point.
Well, you can probably answer the question I'm concerned about. I do think that's, part of it's a function of cost-benefit analysis, which I accept. I think it's better to have more kids have ninety percent than fewer kids have ninety-eight percent. But I am concerned about some of the things that have, as far as I can tell, laptop could still do better. But that may be because I do do something different than what's done in high school. Are you convinced that for the tasks in our English class and our history classes, the iPad does get ninety-five percent of what you want, or ninety percent, or whatever it is, as opposed to what I do?
Yeah. And it absolutely can. I see Nolan has his hand up. But, but there are also, I would say, some things that you can do on the iPad that you can't do on a laptop. For example, there's an app that students use a lot called Notability, where you can, you can import PDFs and annotate PDFs. You can take notes by, by, what do you call those things?
Stylist.
Stylist's, or you can do.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get the tech people to teach me how to do that, because I have all that, so I don't know how to do it.
But it's, it's just a fantastic app. And I think it's actually one of the most used by most kids, is that. I will also say that Eric and I both went to Yarmouth High School a couple of weeks ago, because the state was doing, well, Apple was doing a presentation of its, its proposal, which is an alternative to the HP proposal that the governor has endorsed. And one of the things, in terms of the distractions in gaming, one of the things that I heard there was that there is going to be a much more sophisticated tool available for teachers to use to control things, at least in the classroom, to sort of, and I think that will be especially, I mean, it would be helpful at the high school. I think it would be especially useful if it works the way it's advertised at the middle school.
Does that mean I can't get Clash of Clans on my iPad anymore?
You can, you could get it. There's no way, as I understand it, there's no way we can prevent you from getting it.
Okay, good.
But we can, I think, prevent you from using it when you're in a class. We don't have that capability right now. And, but there may be some capabilities coming. So sorry to, but I.
I think you answered my question, Frank.
Nolan, I think, has a question.
Well, I, my, my opinion is, is that if you, you ask ten, ten students if they want to write their essay on an iPad or a laptop, all ten are going to say the laptop. And another, another thing I would, I mean, and that does have to do with this whole learning curve and, and a lot of people not really being used to it yet. And I believe, I believe that, that will come. Another thing that I would bring up is, is that you can do ninety percent of the same things on the iPad as you can on a laptop for half the cost. I just, I don't know if students are actually doing ninety percent of the things that they can do on a I don't know if students are actually doing 90% of the things that they can do on a laptop on iPad, or they're just using it for like 5% of the things and the rest for games. I mean, I just worry about it becoming an expensive game machine. Like, obviously, I wouldn't want that for this school in the future. So Mr. Shedd's, the thing that he heard at Yarmouth High School actually sounds like a really good idea, because if teachers could kind of turn off games in the classroom, then iPads could still be used for learning. And then when you go home, like, if you want to access games, you can.
To be specific about what Mr. Shedd and I heard, it's a tool that's part of the management solution that's provided through MLT-VI. It's a tool called Casper Focus, so if you want to look it up. Casper Focus, what it allows a teacher to do is select the students in their classroom and say, "These students are now using this app." And it locks the iPads into that app. And I'm not sure if it actually disables even the ability to turn the iPad off or not. I know that in some formats of that, then you can actually block that too. So the screens are on, the screens are on that one app. And the... The need for it really arises, not from classroom management, per se, but from the need to be able to provide testing on the iPads. And if you can't lock an iPad into a testing mode, then you can't use it for testing, because the kid could switch over to your messaging or whatever you want to use, Skype or FaceTime, whatever you want to use to try to talk to people or bring up a calculator when you're not supposed to have a calculator, you know, any of those sort of things. So that was the original... The outset of the need for it, and yet it does happen to be a nice classroom management tool if you find it necessary. So specifically to that end. I think that what you're talking about in terms of the environment of where you're at is, again, that is something that we are by necessity addressing, because, no, these are not gaming devices, per se. These are educational devices, and it turns out they're really good at some of the games that you can get on them, but that's not the intent of the device. And the device is for educational purposes. We're still figuring out how we can use them well in educational purposes, how we can use them. And that's the kind of stuff that I'm looking forward to seeing more and more of, and our teachers and staff through... Throughout our district, really, being able to see that kind of implementation. Something that hasn't been talked about is Pond Cove and some of the plan that we have in place for that. The general picture is that Pond Cove has a minimal amount of personal devices. The middle school has... Is flush with them in 7th and 8th grade. They're all one-to-one, everybody there. The 5th and 6th grades' teachers are well set because they're incorporated in. We've added them into the same structure that the staff does at 7th and 8th grade. They have laptop carts, so they've got some tools available and stuff. But the same amount of laptop carts that are available for the 5th and 6th grade are also available for all of Pond Cove. And to supplement that, currently in the classrooms in Pond Cove has minimal numbers of iOS devices and other, like, kind of small personal devices that are available. But that's a focus that we need to work on. Basically, we've got to catch up the bottom there. And if you look at what Auburn's doing with their kindergarten and the like, I'm not saying that's what we're necessarily planning to do, but the focus on including technology at that level and teaching the digital citizenship early and the digital literacy and really getting them on board with, "These tools are tools, and you can use them for educational purposes. They're not just your gaming device." And starting that early is essential for... Especially for our young kids who are coming in now, because they will not be able to work without technology in the future. The world is becoming reliant on technology, and our educational world is by necessity needing more of that technology.
I think we have a couple more questions. Kate, do you have?
But I didn't want to... I want to let Meredith be sure. Part of the thing that was amazing about the committee was that the... Having the teachers, the principals, and then the library in there, the intelligence, the level of professionalism, intelligence, and want of how to help kids get to the next level of understanding and education and learning, so the deeper learning, was really impressive. And, yeah, it was hard to go to 3:00 to 5:30, 2:30 to 5:30 meeting every two... Whatever. We had a lot of meetings when the sun was just beginning to shine. People were there doing the work, and it was wanting always an answer to a question. So... Which is really exciting. Pretty early in the group, Eric, this part of the things that we researched, we went through Project 24, had a MOOC. We talked about the MOOC learning Friday. The reason why I loved that, I went on and did seven or six of them, but it took people... So not only from Maine, but from California and Arizona. I don't think there's any international. I didn't see...
I wouldn't be surprised if there were. It was open to the Internet, and it was a massive online... Massively open online course, or MOOC. And it was sponsored through the same group that puts on the Digital Learning Day, and they created it as part of their digital literacy transition project that we kind of hooked on to, for example, that gear infographic that you saw. That's all part of this Project 24 work. The MOOC that they put together had a lot of experts and other people in the country who are doing this kind of stuff and who have already implemented to a higher degree that we have. I was surprised to see that there weren't more of these experts from Maine, given what we've been doing already. But needless to say, there were some really great stuff, and I ran into several colleagues that I know across the state of Maine who are also participating, and lots of people across the country as well. And it was a nice resource, and it's still going on. I have to complete units 5 and 6 myself.
And I actually... I held myself back from telling all of you guys, "You've got to get on this program. You've got to see, because it's what the future of education is." And so it tied into a lot of Education Weekly and a lot of professional magazines that we read, and what workshops that our teachers are already going to, as well as the IS component of how we're using technology with, you know, to differentiate our learning. So yes, my son says the same thing you guys did. Thanks for voting on a game piece for me. But the reality is, our teachers want the more learning, and with the move to three Teachers with technology, even though I found Gwenneth and Jonathan, the whole team amazing, you know, whatever. We're just... We're getting into it, and it's our future. And David, there's three times a week that all of us can go and get... Learn about iPads and technology and...
I haven't yet received them.
I think... Well, Eric gave permission, and it's not like Meredith to tell us we can't learn.
She turned a box there, didn't she?
Well, uh...
So Eric?
I've never responded to that.
So I've got permission from her.
You have me to share that. Okay. Michael?
I know we've asked a lot of questions, but maybe this is more of a comment. I think, you know, this may hear terms like they're playing games.
Such a bright...
A lot about Legos and robots in mind. You know, children play with Legos at barely early ages, but actually, there's an entire curriculum.
That has developed around Lego's robotic engineering. And I look at technology the same way. You know, it's a tool, and the challenge for the district is to build up programming and curriculum around that tool. So if there's more applications or apps on the iPad that are related to, you know, different course subject matters, and it'll depend on their developmental needs, but I think that's all the district's challenge and opportunity is developing an overall curriculum.
And, you know, in five years, 10 years, the device will be different, but our curriculum should be set so we can be used on that device. I think this is a natural evolution of...
Any introduction of technology, and I think, you know, the challenge the next few years and opportunity is, do we build the curriculum and maximize the resources we have? So I'm not surprised, you know, people are playing games on it. You know, it's depending what age, if you give a bunch of first graders Legos, they're going to play with Legos, but if you do it in a way, they're actually learning STEM skills. So I think that's something we'll look forward to learning more over the next few years.
And some of those games are fantastic learning opportunities, whether it's Minecraft or whether it's... If you know anybody who's struggling with algebra skills, get them Dragon Box. And there are a lot of those that are out there that I don't know if they're even categorized as education, but the educational world is finding them and starting to leverage them. It's really a matter of how you implement them. I mean, there are people who are using World of Warcraft as a way of teaching leadership skills as you form your... What are they called? I haven't played it myself, so I'm just speaking out as someone who's read about it. But you form your units and you lead them into battle and whatnot, and they're using these kind of games, which we often think of as, "No, no, I would not want to see that in my school." And yet, that kind of stuff is out there and actually can be leveraged, but it's a matter of how you use it. And I think that's what we're just starting to get to, you know, with one year of having them at the high school. And with a lot of other people joining on and doing this similar sort of stuff, I foresee a great advancement. We're... We've been leading the charge, and we're right at the crest of the wave and ready to keep going.
Mary?
Just one sort of hardware question. Do we still have a Mac lab in Pond Cove?
Yes.
And will we continue to use that Mac lab, or will that sort of become obsolete and replaced with tablets in your... Or do you have that included in your plan?
We didn't plan out... In this plan, we didn't plan a level of detail of specific labs and that sort of stuff. If I was pushed on the subject, I would say that we will probably maintain a lab in every school because of the necessary resources that it provides for advanced photo editing and maybe a large-scale movie production or something like that. I think in many cases, it will turn more into a studio than a lab. I know that... Betsy Nielsen at the high school is actually looking at... I don't know what status she's at on that, Jeff, but in creating a filmmaking kind of curriculum and the sort... And it's stuff that you can start to do, and you can do a lot of it on your portable devices nowadays. If you haven't played with iMovie on an iPad, it is an enjoyable experience. And you don't often say that about cutting movies, but it's really... Unless you're a movie geek, then it's really enjoyable and fun to slap together your little home movie and whatnot, or to take your exhibition of learning and put it together into a cool show where you throw in your own soundtrack. I mean, that's a really enjoyable kind of experience, but those labs are still going to be useful, and especially at Pond Cove, which doesn't have the access out in the classrooms yet. The future direction I see for Pond Cove is that it is obviously bolstering some of the individual devices that are out there, but also taking any that are left as an infrastructure kind of device, like the laptops on carts and stuff. And basically, just outside of the lab, everything else that's been passed around and shared like that, basically actually installing them in classrooms and saying, "This is your technology. It sits in your classroom. Have access to it." Because you don't have enough right now. There are classrooms that have one iPad, and there's not much sense in one iPad in the classroom. And then maybe the teacher brings in their personal iPad, and they got two. And that's just not much to go with. And so you give them four laptops and an iPad, and at least they've got some grouping that they can do. You know, some of that kind of stuff is where we need to go with... And some of that we can do with the technology we have. And having a technology teacher who will be able to support that transition and stuff is going to be really important. But in the end, we're going to need a few more devices in the middle school, or in the elementary school anyway, just to bring them up to speed. We will end up with kind of an interesting conundrum where the middle school will have... In the 5th and 6th grade currently, they have laptop carts. 7th through 12th will be iPads, and there'll be a lot of iOS devices in the elementary school, too. So there'll be this kind of funky middle year, which we'll have to work out as well, of, "Why do I need a laptop?" You know, they're going to have the converse impression that you guys are sharing of, "I'd rather have my laptop." They're going to be saying, "I don't want a laptop. Give me my iPad back. You know, let me get that quick little keyboard or what." You know, so I think we're going to foresee... I foresee that that's what we will have start to happen in our middle school in that 5th and 6th grade period, and we'll need to address that within the next couple of years as well.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate the spirit with which you're leading the district forward on all these fronts. And I can see, you know, the friction you're up against just standing here and, you know, and taking these questions, and, you know, I imagine that across an entire district. And so I really value your leadership on this. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's exciting work, and as I tell everybody, it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of good work, because I'm working with some great people. So, thank you. The timeline for this, if it isn't shared with you, I believe it is, on the website. We do need to pass this on to the... Let me bring that up again. On to the Department of Education by May 25th. So I believe we need a signature on this in some form or other, and I'm not sure what that process is, but I believe before we send it up to the Department of Education, we need a little stamp of approval. If you don't mind, maybe Meredith can talk to the process on that or something. We can catch up. But again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we are moving on to item 5C.
I really wasn't trying to...
Cap results and the district report card.
I didn't mean to usher poor Eric off the stage here, but I had an opportunity to get my technology ready to go. So New England Common Assessment Program has one more year left in its lifespan, and then it will be replaced by the Common Core Assessment, and Maine is part of the Smarter Balance Consortium. And as we move into next year, we'll spend some time talking about Smarter Balance and what those assessments look like, but for now, this is an opportunity to kind of reflect on our progress under NECAP for the last four years. This is the fourth year that Maine has utilized the NECAP system, although different areas in writing in particular continue to be targeted each year. So if you try to look at continuous progress in writing, it's not terribly useful, because one year they might be looking at narrative pieces, and another year they might be looking at response to informational text passage that you've read. These were the annual measurable objectives that the state of Maine set in order to meet No Child Left Behind expectations. You can see that this year, the state was expected to be at 92% in reading and 90% in mathematics. As we know, Maine requested a waiver from the federal government for No Child Left Behind last year. So to be clear, Level 4 is the highest performance level under the New England Common Assessment Program. It's called proficient with distinction. Level 3 is proficient. Level 2 is below proficient, and Level 1 is substantially below proficient. So you can see in reading at grades 3 through 5, 89% of our students at Pond Cove performed proficient or better, scored proficient or better on those assessments this year, and 86% in mathematics. I'm combining Levels 3 and 4 here as I work across, and 54% in writing. And writing was assessed, again, in 5th grade only, so you're looking at a smaller cohort And again, it was a different type of writing than they've used in prior years, so... If we look at four-year trends, and this did not align terribly well, I may have to switch back here, but as we look at four-year trends, you can see, and actually, you can't see, so I'm going to escape this for a minute, and we'll come back. But generally, at Pond Cove, we've seen a four-year or a four percentage point increase over the last several years. Going from 85% of our students scored proficient or better in 2009, and we're at 89% in reading achievement now in 2012. This format looks better now, so we're going to see what happens here. Yeah, I think I'm there. We'll go back to where we were. There we go. I skipped ahead. So again, similar trend in math at Pond Cove over four years. And remember that we're assessing different groups of students each year, so this doesn't necessarily speak to individual student patterns or patterns of a particular grade, but the real intent of this assessment is to look at school-wide patterns over time. So again, in math, we've seen a slight upward increase from 82% of our students scoring proficient or better in math in 2009 to 86% today in 2012. At the middle school, our scores for this year, again, 89% of our students in grades 6 through 8, because we look at students who are with us in grades 5 through 7, scored proficient or better in reading, and 83% of those students scored proficient or better in mathematics and in grade 8, which was a different type of writing being assessed, again, from what was assessed in grade 5. We also had a significant performance of 83% of our students scoring proficient or better. Again, part of what we want to know is, what does this look like over time? If you look at reading trends at the middle school over time, they're fairly flat. And that makes a lot of sense to us, as we did the work with the literacy committee here that started before I came. What we determined was, we were missing some early literacy experiences for some of our students in the elementary grades. And we began this past school year with the implementation of a phonics program in the elementary grades that's sequential and systematic, and that training has been provided for teachers and that implementation is in place. Our middle school teachers are also working to support students and provide interventions for students who aren't meeting those proficiencies, but it's not surprising to us that we haven't seen the same upward trend in grades five through eight. We know that the window where you can make the most significant impact for children is earlier. In mathematics, again, fairly flat performance, but our scores overall are high with 82% of our students to up to 83% this year performing proficient or better. And again, different cohorts of students in each of those years. And I will say that middle school mathematics trends nationwide, typically what you see over time is that in middle school, student performance drops off, which is an interesting trend. Usually in grades five through eight, you see a slight downward incline of student performance. So the positive news, at least in our cohorts, is that they are basically maintaining their proficiency levels, if not adding to those proficiency levels. So that's good news for us locally. So other things that we try to look at when we look at these assessments are not just how are we doing locally in our own schools, but where does that put us with respect to other schools that surround us? So if we look at our scores, and this is the summative scores for grades three through eight, in reading, mathematics, and writing, you can see we're pretty well in the range of most of the districts that we look at as comparison districts, Yarmouth, Falmouth, and MSAD 51, which is Cumberland North Yarmouth. Slight variations, again, our writing score, and particularly our fifth-grade writing performance this past year was weaker than the performance of some of those other districts. And I think for us, that was a great learning opportunity about, geez, this is a type of writing we need to spend some more time on and to have more conversations with our students So the data is beyond, though, just looking at what's the big picture for us as a school. We begin to look at cohort groups. So cohort groups might be grade level. So if we looked at the students who are in fifth grade this year, we can see that their reading performance increased between 2011 and 2012 by five percentage points. That's great news for us, particularly because we know we were starting to put some interventions in place with those students during this time period. So that's an early indicator that we're hopefully moving in the right direction. We can also look at gender. I didn't include a particular slide for gender, but again, no surprise that reading performance of girls generally in grades three through eight tends to be slightly higher than reading performance of boys in grades three through eight. Again, that's sort of a national phenomenon, but for us, part of the lesson to learn there is to think about what kinds of texts we're asking students to read and respond to. And while the traditional track in literacy, language arts instruction has been to include more fiction and narrative-based texts, we've learned, as research has grown in the field, that it's important to include more informational text, more historical text, more nonfiction text that appeals to male readers as well. Not that that doesn't appeal to female readers. We can also look by subgroup, and the subgroups that our district typically sees pulled out, meaning that there's a large enough percentage of students that those are counted for sort of state and federal assessments, are students with disabilities and are economically disadvantaged subgroups. About 6% of the students in Cape Elizabeth are considered economically disadvantaged based on our free and reduced lunch numbers, and our students with disabilities numbers are roughly in the 10% to 12% range. So those percentages of students, and again, those are sort of known pieces to us, but those students are not performing at the same levels as their peers. And that's work that we also continue to need to focus on as a district. So those are conversations that we continue to have, and for us, we're small enough that we can look at the individual students who make up these groups and take a closer look at what interventions are in place for those students, what supports are in place, and what can we do differently for them as their teachers and instructors. And then we look at student growth. This is the 2009-2010 growth report, and I will say that part of the reason that's the slide is because when I built this slideshow two months ago, the state system wasn't accessible for a period of time because they were working on district report cards and some of the access wasn't functioning. So I don't have the most recent data in there, which was for 2010-11, which is what they based growth on. But the good news is, they looked at it as part of our report card measures, so I can comment on that in a little bit. Again, as we looked at this last year, our students, 84% of our students were meeting or exceeding growth expectations. So that's not, are they meeting the standards, but is it, are they, as individual students, achieving at a higher level, meeting or exceeding the standards that you would expect them to be based on their prior year's performance? And again, that's really great news for us, but we need to also look at the individual students who make up those groups and see if those individuals are making growth, or those individuals who aren't making growth, what's getting in the way for those individuals? So what do we do with this? And again, this is a couple of months old at this point, but we look at the results. We look for patterns, we look for trends, we look for what are our relative strengths and weaknesses. Certain types of writing, for example, we need to look at more carefully. What are the impacts for this for our curriculum? And right now, we're beginning to say, how does this relate to what we know is going to be assessed as we move forward in the Common Core standards for literacy and mathematics? And we'll begin to see that transition in next year's New England Common Assessment Program. They'll be incorporating questions that are based on those new standards in the upcoming assessment. A reminder, Maine has requested a No Child Left Behind waiver from the federal government with respect to annual adequate yearly progress, so districts that are not making AYP, and we have been found to have made AYP in all of our schools in all content areas in recent years, but if you haven't as a district, then right now, the state is putting that on hold. And for us, one of the pieces that are most linked to that are implementing the teacher and administrator evaluation system moving forward. That's one of the conditions that Maine has to prove that it's meeting in order to be granted a waiver. And as I mentioned earlier, the kneecap assessment, it's last year is the upcoming year, and it will be replaced by Smarter Balance in a couple of years. So I want to talk just briefly about district report cards. So these were shared with the board and released by the commissioner and the governor a couple of weeks ago now, it feels like it was a long time ago. You know, Cape Elizabeth received As for each of its schools, and the report cards are based on not only proficiency measures like we just looked at, but they're also based on growth measures. And so, you know, for us, our growth for all students at the elementary school in mathematics was 84%, and for reading, it was 80%. So again, that's really good news, that the majority of our students are not only maintaining where they were, where you would expect them to be year to year, because it's not really where they were, because we're assessing not the third-grade level expectations each year, but now we're looking at the fourth-grade level expectation. So they're achieving above where you would expect them to achieve moving forward. So they're making not just adequate growth, but they're stepping above that. I know it's a little confusing, but I'm happy to answer questions about that. The other piece that the district report cards looked at is the percentage or performance of students in your lowest quartile. And again, for us, the groups that we identified, the cohort groups, are economically disadvantaged subgroup and our students with disabilities subgroup, and those students, many of those students score in that lowest quartile. So the emphasis, again, not just for our district, but for all districts, is to really concentrate on supporting all of our students. That's our responsibility, is to make sure that all of our students are making the growth that we would expect to see. That's it from me.
Any questions for the superintendent?
I have.
Mary?
We're on our second year of really concentrating, or into our second or third year of really concentrating on literacy as a goal for the district. When would we expect to see sort of a bump in scores? It sounds like we had a little lax because of the writing, and there's been sort of a course correction in that regard. Mathematics, it looks like. Falmouth is doing very well. I've heard that they've incorporated a STEM curriculum at this point, and I know we're in the beginning stages of that, and we're looking towards that. I guess I'm wondering, sort of, what are, what's your vision for sort of bolstering some of these scores?
Right.
And supporting students.
So first, the big, the answer to the big question is, it takes three to five years typically with any change that's implemented, or at least that's the research base, to begin to see a change. And I think you can see changes at the classroom level if you're to walk into them today, but you also have to bear in mind that, okay, so Maine was working with the Maine Learning Results, and then it adopted the New England Common Assessment Program, which really wasn't based on Maine standards, but they sort of cross-linked it to some of Maine standards, which was really a cost measure. So the fact that our performance on that assessment wasn't as high as maybe it had been on the Maine Learning Results was no surprise to anyone. And so as we began to make that shift, then suddenly here came the Common Core assessments. And by the way, here are the new standards that you have to meet and achieve, and we adopted, Maine adopted those already. So we're already looking at what are the expectations for a Common Core? And, you know, to be perfectly frank, the New England Common Assessment addresses some of those, but not all of those. And really, the purpose is to go deeper and to help our students have more depth, a greater depth of understanding and a greater ability to communicate their understanding of concepts and information. I anticipate that we are going to be seeing a steady improvement of our reading performance, not just for all students, which I anticipate, not that we're ever going to be at 100%, I think that's unrealistic, but I think we're going to continue to see a steady performance because we have looked at what wasn't happening for students, really systematically and analytically, and we have put interventions in place globally, at the elementary level in particular, to address those gaps and to help students move forward. The problem is, we're going to be looking at a brand-new assessment measure. So the work that we've done isn't going to show linearly, because you're not going to be looking at the same measure, but we have also our own local assessments that we conduct. So we're going to be able to say, geez, as we look back at our NWEA scores or at our DRA assessments, we can see that over time, we've seen a steady uptick in student performance and on those measures as well. So we're not limited by using just this tool, but this is the tool that the state and federal government look at to assess district performance. So it's, we're in flux, and we're going to continue to be in flux, but I feel confident that our teachers and administrators are moving in the right direction with the work that we're doing, in literacy in particular, and in mathematics, as we begin to take further steps into Common Core implementation, that we're going to see the same kind of growth there over time.
Other questions? No, thank you.
This is one of those moments where I should be switching my hat around.
John, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Since we're talking about literacy and growth, though, I think it's a, the three-to-five-year gap, the three-to-five year, when you implement something and then you're looking to see the outcome, three to five years, that you said. I'm amazed by what we're doing, not in the classroom, like sitting on the technology and then being in other meetings around the district. I'm amazed at how the teachers are, and please correct me if I over, if I'm, this is my opinion, people are open to learning what they didn't know before. And having walk-ins in the classroom and having administrators, our literacy people, the feeling is different than the last year. Poetry, the poetry week, that in itself, teachers are opening up and saying, I want to bring poetry in, the kids are excited about it. The same with this literacy week, which was absolutely amazing. It's not just literacy that our scores go up, but it's more of the love of literature and how to communicate with people and show that. I don't know this, a teacher saying, I don't know this, how can I learn it, coming to the book groups, coming to trainings. That's what I see happening, and I don't, is that what you're talking about when you say three to five years, we'll see?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think professional learning communities have certainly been a part of the work to sort of open up practice and to, I think, just help us all be more comfortable saying, geez, I'm not so good at that, but I bet you seem to do that really well. Can I watch you? Can I observe you? And our building administrators have taken really thoughtful steps, I think, to help teachers and teacher leaders and department heads have been a part of this work as well, but encouraging those conversations and opening up that dialogue. The, what I'm specifically talking about in the three-to-five-year piece is that there's a pretty significant body of research that says, when you're learning something new, you're not as skilled at it, and some other things fall off because you're concentrating so hard on that new piece that you've learned, that you forget that you were really a good teacher before and you did a lot of things terribly well. And so you don't sort of gain your momentum and hit your full stride instructionally until really that third year, which is just about who we are as adult learners, and you see that with kids, too. You don't master everything the first time you see it, it takes time. That's why curricula like everyday math were developed, because children's learning opportunities sort of spiral. They're open to it at a certain window, but developmentally, they can absorb certain pieces of the information, but they may need to see it again and again. And so that same thing happens for us as adult learners. And so when we start doing something new in our classrooms, or providing new instruction, or introducing a STEM curricula, or trying out this new literacy practice, we're going to be pretty good at it. But the second year, we're going to be better at it, because we will have had the opportunity to have a conversation with our colleague, or get some feedback from an administrator or a peer, and from our students, and to see, how did this go? And by the third time we do it, we probably are doing it really well and successfully, because we've incorporated now that feedback and that additional learning. And so that's when you really see changes take off for students.
That's great. Well, thank you for doing and setting up the time for teachers to be able to get the learning and practice and ask other teachers to get better at the craft.
Item D.
Okay.
Wow. Moving right.
So, we had one letter of resignation received from Mary Hart. Mary is a part-time art teacher at the high school, who's been with the district for 20 years, and she is leaving us. She has the opportunity to be on the faculty at Colby College, so we wish her well in that endeavor.
Thank you. Item C.
D.
Sorry, I'm not wearing my glasses. Eve's coming after D.
Put the scene.
I'm not particular about alphabetical order, so it's okay. So I want to start with sharing some information from Mort Sol about the National Latin Exam, and that was an optional exam for students this year, and of the nine students who take it, took it this year, six of them scored really highly. And I just want to commend Natalie Vaughn, who earned a silver maxima cum laude, McKenna Wood with a magna cum laude, Cole Carpenter with a magna cum laude, Jessie Mayo with a magna cum laude, Zoe Gillies with a cum laude, and Jasper Hansel, who is the sole Latin II student, when Latin II meets voluntarily before school, who received a cum laude. So congratulations to the students and to Mort for a job well done. Tonight is the seventh and eighth grade band concert, so Mr. Purley is not here with us, but he is there enjoying the concert and supporting those teachers and students and their families. Last week, as Kate mentioned, was literacy week, and it happened off on Saturday with the first, maybe, annual, I don't know, Author Fest, which had a really magnificent turnout, and the feedback was really positive, I think, not only from students and families who attended, but also from the authors and illustrated who attended and presented. So I want to say thank you to the committee who helped put last week together. It was really, there was a wide range of offerings and a number of wonderful opportunities for students.
So I want to say thank you to the committee who helped put last week together. It was really, there, there was a wide range of offerings and a number of wonderful opportunities for students and teachers to learn from and interact with just wonderful professionals in the field of literacy and specifically in beyond. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, I was lucky enough to be there as a volunteer reader on Thursday for the parade put on by the kindergartners and first graders. K-1 and 2. They, they paraded in their favorite book character through the entire Pond Cove and middle school hallways. I did. It was adorable. It was a hit. It's a huge success. The whole school is obviously very ignited. So it was fun.
It was an equal, an equally large hit for the middle schoolers who had the opportunity to see them walk through.
Yeah.
Who actually, I, I heard some, you know, seventh and eighth graders saying, can we get our picture taken with Clifford?
Who was Clifford?
Who was Clifford? I don't know.
Well done.
Juniors took their SATs on May 4th. And so again, congratulations to the high school on, and to those students who spent a full morning busily taking those exams. But it's also not a small feat to bring your entire junior class together and to proctor those exams. So thanks to the high school guidance office and the faculty who supported that work. Our sixth graders spent a week at Chawonki and had the most beautiful weather, I'm told, that they have ever had.
Ever.
So that was
Ever. Been reminded by my kids. Ever.
That was a nice experience for them on the whole. Also at the middle school, sixth grader Ezra Smith, his doodle for Google Design was chosen as the state runner-up. He wasn't the winner, but he was the state runner-up. And his piece was displayed online, but when I tried to find it yesterday, it's no longer there. So you might have to check with Mrs. Lala Roner if you want to see that piece. On May 2nd, the High School Parents Association Hope and the High School jointly sponsored a forum for parents on substance abuse. And I think that was an informational evening for those who were in attendance. And some of that information has previously been posted online. But I'm sure if you would like more information, you can reach out to any of those groups and they would be happy to provide you with some. We have lots of events coming up as we move forward from end-of-year concerts. Next Tuesday, it will be an all choral concert from grades four through 12. We're doing sort of a joint performance at the high school on Tuesday evening. Should be a fun experience, I think. On Thursday of next week, it's awards night for grades nine through 11 at the high school. And prior to that is a presentation from, poster sophomore research presentations, excuse me, from 5:00 to 6:30. We have, as Mr. Mullen mentioned earlier, the High School Spring Show coming up at the end of the month, May 31st and June 1st, I believe, are the performance dates. The High School Band and Choral Concerts on June 4th. And graduation, which will occur prior to our next meeting on June 9th. I was thinking it was the 8th, but I'm pretty sure it's the 9th. Pond Cove celebrated Arts Day on May 2nd. Again, that was organized by the Pond Cove Parents Association. It was a huge success. There were 26 artisans who came in. And I watched students in the courtyard performing their karate kicks. And there were students dancing in the hallways and lots of creative art projects that came home that day as well. Some comments from Pond Cove about Cape celebrates Literacy Week. Author illustrator Scott Nash presented to all K-4 students last Monday and Tuesday. The Maine State Ballet performed Page to Stage, excuse me, scenes from Alice in Wonderland for students last Wednesday. And they performed for the middle school as well. Storybook Character Parade, as Joe previously mentioned, for students in K through 4. And then on Thursday and Friday, storyteller Len Cabral was here as well, performing for students. And I've heard lots of students sort of retelling or telling their own stories with a bit of a dramatic flair since then. So he had an impact as well. And then, related to literacy, six teachers from Pond Cove and some middle school staff members as well. Two middle school staff members just completed a year-long literacy course where they've been working directly with students and participating in course, a course every week after school. They've been completing assignments and coming in before school to try out those instructional strategies with students. It's been led by Rosemary Ginn, who's a reading specialist at Pond Cove. But again, I think it's not only built sort of their instructional skills, but also built a nice network for faculty across the two schools. That's my list.
Thank you. Any, are there any questions on the superintendent's report?
Meredith, you have to, I, I know you didn't put yourself in there for the amount of work that you did on the literacy committee. I was able to get there maybe four nights and you were there every night, including Friday and Saturday, all day Friday and Saturday. The work is amazing. Thank you very much for everything you did. The meetings I sat in, Meredith brought everybody together, heard their ideas, championed them and let them run with it and was always there for guidance for, how can I help? I'm stumbling. And then Meredith with her positive attitude would cheer them on to get to the next stage. The library's involved. The, all three schools were involved. IS regular ed. It was a very impressive group. And of course, CEAF was involved, of course. Thank you for your work.
Well, it was fun to do and really the committee did 99% of the legwork.
Thank you for being modest.
It was fun. And I, it was a positive experience overall. I think there were some great experiences for kids that came out of it.
I, I only got to attend the Saturday event with the authors, but it, but it was just a phenomenal thing to be able to, to provide for not only students, but also adults who were there to, to speak with the authors, to listen to them read from their books, to, to hear students asking questions of authors about how they, about their process and how long it took and what work went into writing, writing these stories. I think it was, it was inspirational.
I'll add, we thanked the authors at the end of the Author Fest for the dinner. And the most consistent thing I heard from them was what thoughtful questions the students who attended had. And that it was a really unique experience for most of them in that it was probably the most interactive and where they had heard the most questions from young people. So there, some of them are already asking me what the date is for next year, which is a good problem to have.
Right. Okay, so moving on then to the new item, item 5F, that we added to the agenda. And I hope I'm not stealing any thunder from Mr. Shed, who's got an awards presentation coming up, by recognizing our student representatives tonight, Abby Donnelly and Nolan Morris. These are two students who have given us a tremendous amount of time, of their time this year on the, on the school board. They have endured countless hours of, of school board meetings patiently. And they have, their contributions have been extremely valuable. We've, we've dealt with a number of issues this year where student input was really important. And, and the thoughtful comments that, that both of you have brought to our process has really, really meant a lot to the board and, and our consideration of those issues. And so I want to thank you for that, for that service. And, and you will be sorely missed. And we wish you the best of luck next year. And I have a certificate to approve it. Okay, so new business, item 6A, consideration to approve the proposed 2013-2014 Academic Year Calendar. May I have a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the 2013-14 Academic Year Calendar as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any comments?
As presented here.
It's in your packet.
So the draft, the draft of this calendar was, I think, shared with the board in January, is my recollection. As you'll recall, due to a legislative change last year, we have to have no more than five dissimilar days with the districts that comprise the local, regional, educational center, excuse me, which for us has Portland Area Technology High School. Portland adopted their calendar at long last on April 23rd. So here is our calendar, which complies with the five-day requirement.
Wow.
And for those watching who can't see this at home, it is basically a similar calendar to this year. So the February and April vacation. Although we have heard that Portland is exploring the possibility of a single vacation in March for the upcoming school year. So that would have an impact for us and would certainly be something we would need to talk about in the upcoming year.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Okay. B, consideration to appoint representative to the Community Services Advisory Commission. May I have a motion?
I move that we appoint representatives to the Student Advisory Committee. And there's no list of Advisory Commission. There's no list of
I'm sorry.
But you asked for a motion. It may be easier for her to make a motion if you want to make a nomination of the members first.
Oh, okay. Well, I can, all right, I will nominate. We had, we've had applications from, from some terrific community members, including Trish Brigham, Sarah McCall and Debbie Butterworth.
Okay, thank you. So I move that we appoint Patricia Brigham.
Brigham.
Brigham, Sarah McCall and Debbie Butterworth as representatives to the Community Services Advisory Commission.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just that we're extremely lucky to have such talented and involved community members offering to, to be part of the Community Services Advisory Board. It's, I was very impressed with the applications. I think it'll be a very strong committee.
Well, I would second that and note that there, I think there's important community issues in front of the, in front of Community Services this year. We, we learned a little bit about one of those in the Fitness Center. And, and I'm glad to have, among these folks, some, some of the people who, who had expressed their passion for the Fitness Center. So we know that there's, there's people in this group who care about that facility and finding ways to make that work going forward. So I appreciate the applications from each of these three as well. Yes?
Just one note for the record, that there are different term lengths for these individuals. So Trish Brigham and Sarah McCall will be fulfilling terms from 2013 to 2015. Those are new, new terms that were vacated at the beginning of the year. And Debbie Butterworth will be fulfilling a term that expires at the end of this calendar year that was vacated via resignation from the committee.
Thank you. All those in favor? Item C, approval of athletic extracurricular staff nominations. May I have a motion?
Yes, I move we approve the athletic extracurricular staff nominations as listed in the board packet. And they are for positions for JV and varsity baseball and one position for girls lacrosse.
Second?
I'll second. Or Elizabeth?
Any comments or discussion? All those in favor? Item D, policies for second reading.
Okay, well, I move that we approve the following policies for second reading as listed in item 6D in today's packet.
And I guess
And deletion.
Items for deletion as well.
Yes.
Most importantly.
Most importantly, since our, our charge was to thin the policy manual.
I'd like that.
Yes.
I'll second that.
A second? You seconded it? Any discussion on these policies? Okay, all those in favor? Item E. This is a first read and there won't be a vote. So Joe, do you want to make?
Sure. Well, I would just like us to consider for first reading, the policies that are listed in item 6E in today's packet. This is a first reading. There's no final vote. This is being basically put out to the community for those who have any comments that they'd wish to share or comments that they wish to make on any of these policies. That they do so in writing, to you, Meredith, or I, prior to our next policy meeting, which would be the first Monday of June.
Okay, thank you.
And also, I'd like to point out, there is a list of recommended policies also for deletion under item 6E.
Thank you. Item F, this was the item I was looking for when Mr. Kramer was mentioning the schedule. And now I see why I didn't see it because there's, formatting is different.
Yes, the formatting is different. As he explained, there is a requirement to submit the technology plan to the Department of Education by May 25th. That does not mean that they will necessarily accept it on sort of first pass. They sometimes will say, we like these pieces, please address these, please make these changes. So what we need from you really is authorization to allow the chair and the superintendent to sign off on the district technology plan as approved.
May I have a motion?
Should I move that we authorize the chair and the superintendent to author, or to authorize the Cape Elizabeth School District's technology plan for 2014 through 2017?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? David?
Yeah, I, I will vote in favor, but I have a slight problem with the fact that the technology plan was sort of summarized on a, on the wall and I have not seen it in writing. So I'm approving something I haven't seen 95% of, but I'm doing it in reliance on the excellent committee and so forth. But in the future, if I'm going to be asked to vote on the plan, I'd like to see it in writing ahead of time so I can read it.
And I certainly appreciate that. There was a change this year legislatively. It calls for the plan to be submitted to the Department of Education prior to June 30th. And the committee received word that the plan had to be submitted by May 25th. So they hadn't necessarily intended to bring it to this meeting. The real intent was to have brought it to the subsequent meeting. And they had been finalizing the work on the plan as late as last week. So I certainly understand the circumstances.
Well, I, I figured there was something like that. Some number of years ago, I wouldn't have done something on faith. This year I will. And it's because of you and the people who are on that committee. You being Meredith, for the
If, if people, when they, when they have more time to spend with the technology plan, if they have questions or comments, of course, those can be brought to the, to Meredith or to Mr. Kramer.
Does it have to have school board approval? I mean, do we have to approve the plan or do we, can we just approve that you can submit the plan?
That's right. Right now, we're just asking for you to approve that we submit the plan.
Okay.
And then once we have an okay from the state, we'll bring it back to you for final approval.
Okay, so can we change the wording then of the motion? Because the motion says, consideration to approve the district's technology plan.
That's not what Michael read.
Oh.
Joe.
Michael.
I'll, I'll remove my last one and say, I move that we approve, I move that we authorize the superintendent and school board chair to submit the Cape Elizabeth School District's technology plan to the required state committee or agency for the 2014-2017 school year.
That's fine.
Can you second for that?
I'll second it. I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Just one quick question. Does that mean that even though you're submitting it, we, we can, we're going to get a version later and we can change it after you've submitted it?
If necessary.
If, exactly. If need be.
Well, I don't believe in changing something if it's not necessary. So my point is, we
Can I, what time is it? What time is it?
I understand your point, David. Basically, we're submitting this...
I'm not sure I understand that crack, but I remember it.
Basically, we're understanding, we're submitting this as what we believe is a workable draft that we may receive some feedback from the state on that suggests we make changes in a particular, on particular areas and that we would incorporate those changes into that draft and bring them back to you for final approval. If there are changes beyond that, that the board feels are important, then we would resubmit it to the state for approval a second time.
Okay, that's a fairly bizarre procedure, but if I, we're just trying to get the first link in the chain by submitting it, but if we can submit it again if we think this changes.
That's correct. We can amend the plan at any time, actually, between during the three years, but to meet the timeline, we...
And I'm less concerned that I haven't read everything that I'm approving.
All those in favor? 7-0. Item 7, committee reports. Do we have any committees, chairs who would care to make a report at this point at 9:00? All right, item 8, school board agenda request. Are there any requests for new agenda items for future meetings? Seeing none, we move on to item 9, announcement of upcoming meetings?
Again, I'd just like to, oh, I'm sorry. It's 9:00. Again, I would just like to announce our next policy meeting is Monday, June 9th, June 3rd. And a list of the policies that we will be reviewing in that meeting will be on our website. And I suggest if anyone has comments or concerns, to get those to us prior.
And I wanted to say to the board that we put on the schedule for June 11th, an executive session to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent. That's one of the most important jobs that the board does every year and so that, I just wanted that to be on your schedule. That's, that would be the night of our June regular business meeting, so it just means we'll start a little bit earlier that night, so we have time to do that in advance of the meeting if that works with everybody.
Are we going to have materials in advance to look at?
Yes.
I believe that's scheduled for May 28th, so you'll receive that information at or prior to the workshop on the 28th.
Thank you. And, yeah, so the process will work as it has in the past. The superintendent will do a self-evaluation and we'll receive that on May 28th and then we'll have time to put together our evaluation and assemble it in advance of our June 11th meeting, so we can meet at that time to discuss it. Thank you. And the meetings that are scheduled for the 15th and the 18th, are those worth...
Sure. Informational meetings for parents of incoming kindergarteners are scheduled for tomorrow night, the 15th, at 7:00 here in the Thomas Jordan Conference Room and also on Saturday, the 18th.
Saturday, the 18th at 9:00.
Thank you. At 9:00 AM in the Jordan Conference Room.
And can you just clarify the distinction between an informational meeting for incoming kindergarten parents and a kindergarten orientation meeting, which this is not?
Sure. I mean, this really is an opportunity for parents to ask questions and better understand the processes that moves forward. Orientation is more typically an experience where you're meeting with your child's teacher. You have the opportunity to understand what's happening in that particular classroom and all the ins and outs of the day-to-day routines that occur in a specific classroom.
And so, and the orientations will occur later in the summer?
That's, that's the plan.
Typically in August, right?
Yep, they're typically held later in the year.
Okay. David?
I just want to note, whoever's actually watching this, that there is a, two extensive letters on our website, one explaining the board's rationale for the approach we're taking and one is Meredith's excellent question and answer of, answers to how this program we hope will be implemented, which people can look at prior to these meetings. But they should look at our website in case they haven't received them already.
Thank you for pointing that out. That moves us on to item 10. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Will you adjourn? Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you all.
See motion.